Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, with which we stand as one nation, and with this law, we are equal.
Roll call please. Councilmember Erby, here. Councilmember Page. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy, here. Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Vice Chair, you have a forum.
Thank you. The drama hasn't been done this week, so we'll move to bid openings. We have no bid openings this morning, we'll move to communications.
Madam Vice Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number two, 6th District.
Receive, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered. Item number three, 6th District.
Receiving, file.
So ordered. Item number four, 6th District.
Receiving, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered. Moving on to road and regiment matters, Madam Vice Chair, item number one, all districts.
Receive, file, and that will be the order.
And also moving on to other communications, item number one, all districts.
Receive, file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 6th District.
Receiving, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number three, 7th District.
Receiving, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Item number four, 1st District.
Receive, file, and appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Opposed, I'm sorry. Motion carries. Item number five, all districts.
Receive, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Second.
Not due.
And that will be the order, I'm sorry, I messed you up. That will be the order.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight.
Receive, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, 7th District.
Receiving, file, and county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Moving on to add-ons, Madam Vice Chair, under other communications, we have item number one, all districts.
I don't see my add-ons, too. I haven't talked to the chair about it.
Where is to hold?
You see that? This one? Okay. We'll hold that on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Receive, file, and that will be the order. Thanks. Reported the county executive, who's not here, so there's no report. Reported special committees.
Please hold on the order of business.
Okay. Public forum. We have eighteen speakers this morning, Madam Vice Chair. We'd like to ask you to come forward when your name is called, you have three minutes, and the county clerk, Jen, will let you know when your time is up.
First speaker this morning is Forrest Miller.
I'm here.
Then Reverend David Scott.
Hello. I am Pastor David Scott at St. Louis United Methodist Church. I am the senior pastor there. Our address is 2761 Telegraph Road, and we are one block away from the proposed Sylvan Springs Senior Apartment Complex, and I'm speaking in favor of this development. Our church is very, very growing congregation and very open to the community. We have a number of folks in the baby boomer age range and seniors that have either retired or have recently retired or will be retired for several years, and there is a need, I believe, for housing for these seniors. Many in my congregation are forced to move to other areas because there's not an adequate number of very good, high-quality senior housing that is in our area. They don't want to move away, but they do want quality housing. And so I do believe, after reviewing the plans, after doing due diligence, I think the development that is being proposed is a great addition to the Telegraph Road area. Also, Telegraph Road, as you know, is known as Hero's Highway, and so I do believe that there is an intentional effort by this development corporation to allow twenty percent of their housing to be designated for veterans, and I think that that's an intentional way for us to honor Hero's Highway, and so I think that's an important issue also. So as the need is presented, I believe that this need helps us in that district to put our best foot forward. Our church is trying to do the revitalization project and do some building ourselves, and so as other districts, you know, we all are interested in growing and improving and revitalizing the neighborhood, and the Telegraph Road neighborhood is no different. And so with these intentional efforts and with the addition of housing developments like this that are quality developments, with our growth at the church, I believe this is a very worthy project for our county to pursue, and I thank you for your time and for hearing my speech.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Pat Jaeger.
I'm Pat Jaeger. I've lived in LeMay for over fifty years. I'm here today to ask you to approve the senior apartment only at 2845 Telegraph. These apartments are not just any apartments, they are for seniors with many features that help seniors to be safe, happy for many years. They are in the mid-range guidelines, not lower income like HEBBA 53 at 3601 LeMay Ferry Road. My mother lived there from the first day a HEBBA opened until she died in 1995. To be honest, I had hoped to live there myself when I retired because we loved that place. When I went to apply and get on the waiting list, my monthly income was too high for them. When my mother lived there, they also had market rate available, but not now. If you approve, these apartments will be good for the area and to free up moderately-priced homes for families and let seniors live in a safe place with many things to help them live a happy life. I thank you, and I surely hope that you approve these because they're very much needed. The report from the planning committee indicated all favorable things, and like I said, there was some mention that there were other apartments. There are other apartments in LeMay, but not for seniors. These have all the safety, it'll be a secure buzz-in, manager on duty, appliances in your apartment, all the positive things, so thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Bye. Next speaker is Stan Brown.
I just dare right here say suppose that you're all happy. I live in St. Louis County, and I'm president, chairman, parlay's, also, I have disabilities. Spoken before, I want to speak tomorrow. I want to thank my behalf, all the vets in St. Louis County that are disabled, all the disabled, the president, as, we need to build 97. Special thanks to Councilman Frankis, Lucy, this, staying with, and making, lots of, terrible deeds, as, so, thanks to county, I think, so, so, day. So, I, 87, full-time, eighty-eight, St. Louis County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tim Day.
My name is Tim Day. I live at 7329 Nottingham, 63119. I'm here to talk about Tower T. It's been over nine months since Tower T closed. It was the last public driving range south of forty inside of 270. The land remains zoned for golf recreation. In February, McBride Homes purchased the land, and they presumably intend to develop it into a subdivision. At a town hall last week, the county land use manager, Gail Choate, admitted that it's not typical for a developer to spend millions of dollars purchasing land for redevelopment without getting it rezoned first. Normally, the rezoning would occur while the land is under contract but before the final closing. Ultimately, McBride purchased a driving range. Since then, they've demolished most of what was there previously, but the fact remains they need this council to approve the rezoning before they can build any houses. Lisa Clancy, to her credit, has been engaging both the residents and McBride in an effort to work out some kind of a compromise. While I would welcome a true win-win solution, McBride has been rather slippery in their handling of this, and there's not a whole lot of trust to build on. The closure of Tower T hurt the local golfing community. This was a special place that attracted men and women, old and young, black and white, where the most casual and hardcore golfers could hit balls on their lunch break or on their way home. This time of year is typically the time that golfers need to work on their swing, and for the first time in fifty-six years, there's no Tower T. I'd like to see McBride revise their proposal to include a driving range somewhere on the property. If it were up to me, the only way they get to build any houses is if they restore some of the amenities, starting with a reconfigured driving range. What it really boils down to is that McBride bought a driving range on spec for an inflated value of the land based on their housing projections. It's unrealistic to think that an angel investor trying to maintain the legacy of the recreational facility is going to pay at or above what McBride originally paid for it. If you deny the rezoning, the land stays zoned as a driving range, and McBride will suddenly have a financial incentive to sell or lease to someone willing to operate the rebuilt driving range and restore some of what has been lost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jenny Hoeman.
Thank you for your time. My name's Jenny Hoeman, and I live at 7905 New Hampshire Avenue, and I'm here on behalf of the Tower T land. Like I said before, we bought our home in 2017 because our backyard backed to the green space, which is beautiful. I'm very disappointed in what has happened here. The buildings at Tower T were torn down yesterday, and they're still tearing down today. Basically, it seems like everything is moving forward with McBride. It seems the town hall meetings were put in place just to say that the community is heard, but it seems it really doesn't matter because McBride is going to do what they want to do. Who would buy a $4.7 million piece of property that wasn't a done deal already? Also, at the town hall meeting, Lisa, you mentioned that a lot of people want the homes built in this area. I've been to all of them, and I only have heard of three say that they want the homes built. The rest of the community does not. Thank you for bringing the planning and zoning lady to the town hall meeting last week, Gail. She was very vague about what studies will be completed. She really says that it is up to planning and zoning on what studies will be performed. You heard the community, how important we feel that these studies are completed. Traffic on Higgy, can you provide us with proof that the traffic won't be an issue? Blasting bedrock, can you provide us with a guarantee that my foundation and others will not crack? And if it does, what will be done about it? Because of the blasting of the bedrock, this is a serious issue. Water runoff in sewers, can you provide us with proof that we will not have water issues and sewer backup issues? Schools, can you provide us with proof that the schools won't be overcrowded? The wildlife, what will happen to the deer and other wildlife? Where will they go? These are big issues. My profession is in real estate. Location is key. In my professional opinion, this is not the right place to build. There's a chemical plant, there's large towers, there's bedrock, there's a train trestle, there's one-lane Higgy traffic issues. Please keep the space green for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ed Golderman.
My name is Ed Golderman. I live at 542 Widdell Court in Kirkwood, Missouri, and the day meeting gave me a chance to look into the offices over here to see the American Gallery of Portraits of the Presidents. This was one of my grandfather's contributions. This set went all over the world for years. I think they were in the farmer council rooms years and years ago, maybe when the first McNary was the county councilor. So it was nice to see that. I'll try to go from that way on. Mr. Harder, what is looming over St. Louis County will win either election, so it is very risky to assume that a local election only will take care of this assault. That is a very risky assumption. Mr. Fitch is not here. Mr. Trachis, if you want any return on investment, any return on investment of monies invested in downtown St. Louis, and you should have, you get them to Free Keel Opera House, the only five venue under one roof downtown performing arts center in America. Nothing has ever come close, and if the folks on Grand Avenue can't make it, that's tough. You have a downtown to bring back. I was here twenty years ago, we almost got it done. We almost got it done right. Ms. Clancy, good luck with Tower T, that's a tough one. The last one is, there are fourteen slices out of my personal property tax. I just have a 2003 Ford Taurus, so, you know, it doesn't do anything to me at all, but the third largest on this, or second maybe, if you add education and libraries and special education, the second or third largest is the Zoo Museum District, five taxes. I was here eleven years ago telling you, basically, they no longer need that money, they have so much money, they have so many flows of money, they hide so much money, and they want more. So if Mr. Stanger and Mr. Page were here, I would say, make a call and end those five taxes and save $60 million a year for the people of St. Louis County. And thank you for your courage yesterday, my friend. You stepped up for every St. Louis County resident. Thank you, thank you, and, you know, they don't understand, I don't even know if they were there, but thank you.
Thank you. We had plenty of press coverage. Next speaker is Marsha Mallor.
I am Marsha Mallor. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Missouri, and I'm here to discuss Sylvan Springs. The site is proposed to be located on the corner of Fran Rue Lane and Telegraph Road. There have been a couple of issues that were raised during public comments, town hall meetings, one regarding stormwater and one regarding the width of Fran Rue Lane. Currently, there is a low-lying area at the corner of the intersection. When a lot of rainwater, a lot of heavy storms happen, sometimes Telegraph Road will see some water, ponding issues, and then also, Fran Rue Lane itself is only about eighteen to nineteen feet wide with no true right-of-way dedication in some areas. The construction and development of Sylvan Springs will address both of these concerns. We will be designing a stormwater management plan with the guidance, rules, and regulations of MSD to address those stormwater issues and also to install best management practices. This would alleviate any flooding of Telegraph Road, and in addition, the county department of transportation requested that we widen Fran Rue Lane and dedicate additional right-of-way and also install curb and gutter and stormwater facilities to allow for that improvement on Fran Rue. So with the approval, hopefully by this board, for the Sylvan Springs development, we can address both of those critical issues that have been plaguing that area, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Dodson.
Good morning, Madam Vice Chair and council members. Appreciate the time to address you today. My name is David Dodson, 1710 Finn Park Drive, 63026. I'm a principal of Bywater Development Group, the sponsor of the Sylvan Springs apartment development, a proposed fifty-unit affordable senior apartment development at Telegraph and Fran Rue, about a quarter mile north of I-255. Bywater's a local firm specializing in affordable housing and community development initiatives in the region. We are a St. Louis County-based firm and have assembled a team of St. Louis County-based professionals to develop the proposed project. You should know that prior to forming our company, Bywater's principals worked at RH CDA, one of the region's premium and not-for-profit community development organizations, where we helped serve the LeMay community, providing technical assistance to a couple of local development organizations, and also by obtaining federal funds that helped finance the construction of LeMay Child and Family Center. So we have a history in LeMay, and we love LeMay, and we bring those same principles to our work going forward. Our plan is directly responsive to current planning documents approved by the county council in recent years, including the St. Louis County Age Friendly Community Action Plan, the Imagining Tomorrow for St. Louis County Plan, the 6th District Community Area Study, as well as the LeMay Comprehensive Plan and Neighborhood Master Plan. Perhaps most importantly, this proposed development is designed to address a critical need in the community. According to the statistics that we have, the 63125 zip code has a very, very high number of senior households, and within a one-and-a-half-mile radius of our proposed development site, there are 2,035 senior households who are qualifying income for affordable housing. Since 2010, the number of seniors in the area has increased by almost eleven percent and is projected to continue to increase well into the future. This nationwide trend will continue for decades. Census projections indicate that by 2050, for the first time in history, the number of seniors will be greater than the number of children aged one through eighteen. Our development will help serve this aging local demand, enable local seniors to age in place in their community, and provide convenience to so many nearby essential services. Additionally, our development will provide, as mentioned before, twenty percent of our units set aside for senior military veterans, will provide for over a hundred union trade jobs, provide a high-quality option for downsizing seniors, freeing up homes for new resident families in the area, and we hope it will catalyze additional improvement to the aging Telegraph Road corridor in that part of Telegraph. We've done our best to engage the community in an open and transparent manner and revised our plans at various intervals in response to comments we've received. We're proud of the plan, and we respectfully ask that the county council help us move this development forward by affirmatively acting on our request for a change in zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Madam Vice Chair, I have a few things to mention. There's been a lot of discussion about problems at the county jail after the deaths of three inmates. Members of this council have expressed sympathy to their families. What is being overlooked is that numerous jail employees have come before this council going back more than a year and told of the problems, but nothing was ever done. It took three deaths before the council did anything, so this council also deserves blame. Last week's council meeting was sad to witness. The council had the opportunity to make a difference in St. Louis County, but instead the majority voted to spend almost all of $240 million on an expanded convention center. This despite no evidence it would benefit the people of St. Louis County. The more Councilwoman Erby talked about her bill to expand the convention center, the more unbelievable she became. Most astounding was when she said, "No one suggested where any general revenue funds could be spent." I had a pretty long list. Buying the Tower T land, revitalizing Jamestown Mall, building up the Wellston Shopping District, acquiring a homeless facility, helping in some ways to increase the education outcomes in troubled school districts. It's pretty incredible that Councilwoman Erby can be the council member for fifteen years for the most impoverished district in the county, yet seems puzzled where general revenue funds could be spent. It's also interesting to look at Councilwoman Erby's recent campaign report. That covers the first three months of the year. What a surprise to see all the supporters of the convention center giving her thousands of dollars. Also, Kitty Ratcliffe contributed $600 to her campaign in prior years. Councilwoman Clancy has a similar report, thousands of dollars of contributions from supporters of the convention center expansion and also development and real estate interest, even a big contribution from the Pie Fitters, and she isn't campaigning neither, just took office in January. The Councilwoman Clancy's campaign literature says she is committed to partnering with the community to identify and meet needs. She was being dishonest from the start. Her only commitment is to her campaign contributors. I wonder if the Tower T people have caught on yet, that Councilwoman Clancy is only pretending to help them. What I think is needed is another petition drive in St. Louis County before 2021, the same as the one that requires voter approval for sports stadiums, to let voters decide how the $240 million should be spent. As long as the convention center expansion bonds are subject to annual appropriations, a petition drive can change how the $240 million is expended. In 2004, seventy-two percent of St. Louis County voters said they want to have the final say before any tax dollars are spent for a sports stadium. That was a plurality of over 200,000 votes. They made it clear they don't trust the county council. Similarly, I think voters would support a proposal to spend all the $240 million to build up St. Louis County rather than see it spent on another downtown boondoggle. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Tom. You have yet to show us...
You have yet to show us, in legal terms, how we can spend that money. I know very well what needs to be done in my community, and I don't need you to tell me. I just need to know how to use that money legally. And we have not, you have not shown that yet. You just come and throw insults at all of us, but you've not shown us anywhere we can use that money. Thank you for coming.
Next speaker is Joseph Hatton.
Hi, I'm Joseph Hatton. I live at 1036 Winter Lake Drive in Fenton, and I represent the St. Louis County Animal Control Volunteers. I would actually like to talk about Penny that was euthanized recently. So Penny was basically a pretty decent dog, was euthanized on April 18, 2019. With over 500 in sponsorship and pledge money with rescue interest, and before advisory board meeting last night, Penny was euthanized. Nobody was told, but we were all wondering from general public what happened, and not only that, but everybody was pretty much upset and angry that this was not known to us until after the fact. So I do actually want to address these three topics. There's still no accountability of volunteers and who they are, and they're still euthanizing dogs without justification. There's no accountability. Katrina's has euthanized dogs without the owner's consent. A very well-known fact is because the files had been marked as owned, and I actually presented the Sunshine Report on the fact that files were basically marked as owned. Spring Schmidt publicly lied during the particular dog was swinging back and forth when in fact she knew the rules. So there were email correspondence through the Sunshine Act that basically, that there was actually a hold period, and that was basically a policy. So somehow, Spring Schmidt, under her leadership, is actually expert in neurological defect because that's what she claimed. Nowhere has people gotten away with lying, deceiving the public, nor following the protocol. They haven't, in several advisory board meetings, there had been one set of euthanization rate presented to the advisory board, but when I actually pulled the Sunshine Report, there were actually a different set of numbers presented to the Department of Health. So these are slotted discrepancy that we feel that there's no accountability. Because St. Louis County actually has over $2 million in budget at their disposal, and yet they can't even manage some of the part-time workers to basically help out on the dogs and with enrichment time. But yet, in St. Louis Care, in the city, can manage that with a third of that budget, and they do it well. I wanted to mention that Spring had given an eloquent speech at the hearing. It almost convinced me that there was progress in the county and backed it up with facts. However, through the audit and county staff paints a very different picture. Now, what I want to do is talk about the volunteers. Volunteers talk about saving dogs a lot. However, they never talk about themselves nor some of the hardships that they go through, especially dealing with the county. For instance, they didn't take credit for the increase in adoption. The St. Louis County takes full credit for that, even at the advisory board. That is due to the fact that they get the word out of the county and let them know that they understand each other's personality. The biggest part of the reason why the euthanization rate is lower is because that whenever there's a dog at risk, they search out for rescue groups in order to basically try to get them out before they are euthanized. Volunteer have been hit with retaliatory tactics such as euthanizing without reason. County has threatened several times to basically disband the volunteer program. That in itself basically has kept a lot of them quiet. So even though that we tend to kind of like not say that much and we look like it's our fault, it's because of that fact.
Could you wrap up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So my thing is sort of like, no one in the real world can people get away with this, with getting away with lying or following procedures, but the loophole, we need to kind of like make sure that people are accountable and being able to basically have someone accountable for that. Anyone appointed to the position should be easily removed, whether it involves corruption or other people that are basically appointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair, the record will reflect that Councilmember Fitch has joined the meeting. Next speaker is Tashonda Truff.
As everyone knows, I am Tashonda Truff, the mother of Lamar Catchings. No background needed because it's already noted. I want to address the repositioning of Julia Childress. Placing her in another high-level position is unacceptable. Her actions throughout this process show she is undeserving of any position with this county. Ms. Childress does not have the characteristics to lead the future of the next generation, which is what St. Louis County states in their mission statement. She failed at having a safe, secure, humane community for the inmates. She failed in the time of crisis. She failed at assisting in a difficult and stressful period. She failed at making sure the inmates were free from physical, emotional, or physical abuse or neglect. She failed to have her staff well-trained. She failed at being professional. She failed at providing exceptional customer service to the citizens of this community. Basically, she failed your entire mission statement and your approach to direct supervision. And I got those failures from the county's mission statement. How do you return inmates back to their communities if they're dying? She returned to her old cushy job, still not caring what happened under her watch in this county. Our sons cannot return home to us. They are gone forever, and that's exactly where Julia needs to be. She does not represent this county well. I'm starting to feel like our county continues to reward bad behavior. She violated everything this county says they stand for per your mission statement and continues to employ people who don't live up to what the mission statement states. It shows that this statement is only words that are typed on paper to make this county look good, but how do you look to the public? She is an embarrassment and should not be a reflection of St. Louis County. I have gained a lot of respect for this panel, but my advice to the committee that's investigating the deaths, I think you need to get your own attorney, because to be in the same corrupt pot as the rest of the administration in this county, I don't think you all need that. And having an attorney, having a different attorney just makes you look different to the public than they look. So I think that the committee investigating these deaths need their own attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Reverend Philip Duval.
Morning, council. Morning, Vice Chair. First, you know, Mr. Sullivan and we do agree on some things, but as long as he's been in here, probably about as long as I've been tracking this council, you guys are the most engaging council that I've seen. And so we appreciate you getting in the trenches and still coming out here and speaking your position, unlike the previous years, unlike who you replaced. The fact that you took the courage, Councilwoman, to go talk to Tower T and to bring somebody to the meeting is progress. Mr. Tragus, your comments are progress. Every one of you is starting to show progress. So I thank you, Councilwoman Irby, for having the courage, all of you, to speak out and say what it is your conviction is. Now, we just celebrated Easter, those of us who are Christians, and we're moved by our conviction based on our faith. And what I'd always love about the Easter story is not the death, but the resurrection of the truth, because that's the power of the gospel. And there were three deaths across the street, and we're going to find the truth, because a lie pressed to the ground will not live forever. So those of you, not you, Mr. Crane, as an individual, but you as a county counselor, I get probably sickened by the words "the rule of law." Well, there's some humanity codes that when there is death, we need to find out what happened, not protect it. So the good news, we welcome Lieutenant Colonel Doyle as the interim. We felt that was a very just move for transparency, because he already has a record that speaks to the community with the same courage and conviction that you council people have. He's already reached out to the family to have a conversation without lawyers in the room, just to express the humanity and heart of the story of their loss, without an attorney trying to tell him what he can say and not say. This area is in trouble. I don't have to share that with you. We are in a financial crisis. This county is stagnant right now with its population, while outside of here, it's growing. So you're right to be fiscally responsible. You're right to stay on task, but please don't forget the human conduct. So I'll close, as I see it's always tough for a preacher to talk in three minutes. We're going to ask what those minutes look like from that advisory council, if there's any oversight from the advisory council and the Justice Center. We're curious to know what those discussions were. Are they just a rubber-stamp advisory council that's just being fed? So, just like police? I love police, but I don't like the bad actors. So I'm not saying everybody in that Justice Center is a bad actor, but there are some in there, and we're going to help find them for you, and I hope you don't protect them, even though that's your charge. We ask you to rise above and celebrate the resurrection of the truth.
Next speaker is Molly Metzger.
My name is Molly Metzger. I'm an assistant professor at Washington University's Brown School, and I was also a member of the task force appointed by the county executive to invest, to look into the creation of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund for St. Louis County. So to members of the county council and members of the public, if you haven't had a chance to look at our report yet, it was recently released. You can find it at stlewisco.com/housingtrustfund. But what I'm here to focus on today is a bill being introduced by Councilwoman Clancy to amend the Housing Antidiscrimination Ordinance to Include Source of Income laws. So what does that mean? Right now, if you go on Craigslist or you look for an apartment and you search on the statement "no Section 8," you can find lots of livable, quality units that might be in the price range that the Section 8 or Housing Choice Voucher Program would cover, but the landlords in the county are saying, "We don't deal with Section 8." And right now, that's legal. That's in the city since 2015, that is not legal to say across the board, "We don't deal with the Housing Choice Voucher Program." But up until now, it is legal in the county, and that needs to change in order for the Housing Choice Voucher to really work as intended. So what Source of Income protections would do would be basically to say to a landlord, "You can't have an across-the-board policy of no Section 8." That does not mean that a landlord would have to take any applicant that came to their door. It just means that they couldn't treat them differently than any other prospective tenant just based on what their source of income is. So if I'm a landlord and I have two tenants coming to me, two prospective tenants, one has a voucher, the other doesn't, and I move forward with both of them, per this, hopefully this new law, and the one without the voucher moves more quickly and I house them, that's not a violation of the law. You know, this isn't forcing landlords to rent to anyone. It's simply saying, just the way that you can't discriminate on the basis of race, or religion, or family status, or other protected classes, this makes Source of Income part of our local housing ordinance. One of the arguments against this law is that, you know, we should allow the market to work, that the free market, market forces are the most efficient way for housing to be provided. And I guess my response to that is that it's never worked that way. When you look at how we became so segregated in the first place, it wasn't just because of private, you know, individuals making housing decisions, it was a result of public policies from the federal government on down to the local government. And a great telling of this history was written by my colleague Jason Purnell in the report "Segregation in St. Louis: Dismantling the Divide." So because public policy was part of creating the problem, I think it's very appropriate that public policy should be part of solving the problem. This wouldn't solve the problem. It would be a very modest way of allowing some new opportunities to probably a small set of Housing Choice Voucher households, but for those families who want to move, have to have greater housing choice within the county, this could really be transformative for those households. So please support the expansion of the Housing Antidiscrimination Ordinance to Include Source of Income Protections. And also, please, this is my area of expertise. I study Housing Choice vouchers and fair housing. And so if I can be of any assistance as you move forward with this bill, please do let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Molly. Next speaker is Isora Liggins.
My name is Isora Liggins, 5320 Bemidale Road. I've been coming before this council for the last three years. You guys have been very helpful to me in a lot of situations, but it seems like, again, the closer we get to the truth, the harder it is for people to address it. Then we start to making up excuses. Well, when I came here, I told you my problem was problems with the prosecuting attorney's office, not to get help, but just to get the process. And so it was recommended that if I couldn't get the process, then I should probably bring suit against someone over in the prosecuting office that was hindering me. I followed those instructions. I went to court, and I took Mr. McGee, who was assistant in the prosecuting attorney's office, who was impersonating an investigator. After I filed my charges, I found out this county is charging his defense to the taxpayers. Mr. Crane's office is representing him, which I think is totally unfair. So now I'm left alone to try to find out why I can't get charges, simply charges filed in the prosecuting attorney's office. When I go to court, the judge recommends that I take these charges back under the new administration, the Wesley Bell administration, to have his administration reviewed. So I take them back to the Wesley Bell's administration, and the investigator comes in, and does he speak to me? No. When I ask him about perjury charges, he looked at me and asked me, "Have I been to Urban League?" And when I ask him, "What is Urban League going to do for perjury charges?", he humps his shoulders. So as a result, I'm still standing here. I have not been able to find out what the process is. I'm not looking for the decision. I'm trying to find out, what do I do when I go to the prosecuting attorney's office and I file perjury charges, fraud charges, stealing charges? And I can't get anybody to file the process. So is it somebody that I'm asking that this council recommend that someone from the prosecuting attorney's office come before the council and explain what is the standard procedures in the prosecuting attorney's office when you process a criminal charge? I'm hoping that's something that taxpayers can expect to get, and I don't see that that should be difficult. We can't get anything done if the processes are not followed. That's what creates justice and fairness, the process. So I'm asking this council to recommend that the prosecuting attorney's office come before this council and explain to us what is standard procedures in their office in filing criminal charges. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Arne C. Deanoff.
Thank you, members of the county council. Good morning. My name is Arne C. A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and resident, public advocate, and my mailing address is P.O. Box 1535, O'Fallon, Missouri, 63366. My telephone number is 314-440-9000. As before you last week, telling you about misconduct of Circuit Judge Michael D. Burton. Circuit Judge, Division 16 Judge Michael D. Burton has taken civil law to a new high has taken civil law to a new high in a hearing held last Friday. The hate and the power just will not let up or stop. The judge wants me jailed again and that's unfortunate. Political vendetta and playing sickening party politics is beyond comprehension of me. You know, there's just numerous problems that have happened with the Corrections Department and St. Louis County in this case. Judge Burton has violated numerous laws of civil procedure and numerous rules of Missouri Supreme Court regulations and rules. I'll never forget when Corrections Officer, and I'll find out his exact name if Mr. Childress does not want to provide his name to me or any of the other corrections officers that guarded me at Missouri Baptist Hospital, but his name needs to be on the record. One day, having a heart attack, he said, "Crawl on the floor because I'm not gonna get you a wheelchair." At Missouri Baptist, he was the same officer on his cellphone threatening four women with physical violence if they did not do as she told them, as he told them to do. And he was married. Does that make any sense? No. Nurses at the county jail were given a huge increase in salary and benefits. You know, the county executive now appointed a new interim Deputy Police Chief Doyle and hopefully we get answers and a change. More alarm, more alarming is a recent lawsuit filed this month against St. Louis County. Adrienne Thurman, seven months pregnant, wrongly unfairly arrested over a civil matter for a paternity test. Treated rudely by the staff, complained of back pain, denied of seeing a doctor, denied tests. Had complaints, had a screening. The staff was untrained. The nurses didn't pick up. It was on the blood test. It would have caught the early detection of her breast cancer. It's now spread to her spleen. She was in prison and lost in prison for 39 days and nobody could find her. This is back in November. This is all missing and unaware court date over a paternity test. She was arrested, jailed on a warrant. She could have bonded out for a hundred dollars, but nobody told her what her rights were.
That's three minutes.
What judge? What judge put somebody in jail like that? What personnel or nurse in the jail allows somebody that has breast cancer to go on like that without seeing a doctor and getting medical treatment? Where were her human rights and where is the bond system? This is unconscionable. I asked Deputy Chief Doyle to conduct an immediate Internal Affairs investigation. And as a matter of fact, Chief Doyle, we're all waiting for our, our, our internal affairs investigation because I have been denied access to file one. These families behind me that have lost their three loved ones have been denied to file an Internal Affairs investigation. And it's about time that the families deserve the answers. Thank you.
Next speaker is Natasha Trup.
Hello, everyone. My name is Natasha Trup. Everybody know I'm Lamora's aunt. So standing on what he just was talking about regarding the transparency with the council, I appreciate what y'all done so far and I appreciate the tidbit of Mr. Doyle. But the, it still remain the fact that all of this is still happening up under y'all watch also. It's just not the jail system. It's y'all. If this continue to happen, this ain't the first you done heard of a death. This ain't the first you done heard of abuse. But y'all have failed to act. So now we need y'all to act. It's okay to talk, but we need action. Doyle is great, but that's a Band-Aid. We need some truth and facts. We need some transparency. We need people to stop being hurt. That's what we're looking for. We're not getting that. We also need the same way that you would charge us with a crime. Same way you would subpoena me and come in my house and kick in my door to come get me. Use the same thing with them. They're criminals. They're criminals up under your watch and you approving them as criminals. Matter of fact, you backing them. You gave Julia Childery a position over making protocol and procedures. She couldn't even follow the ones when she was an acting director. So how do she now get to pick and choose what to do about them? That was wrong. She should have been a CO if you gonna keep that as a job. Cause it's obviously she don't know what to do. So again, council, what are you gonna do? We, we can hold these meetings every Tuesday. We can come talk till we all blue in the face. What actions are we gonna give? Or do we have to take it to the public? You know, cause everybody's voted in, correct? And y'all have four-year terms? And I know a lot of y'all are sitting here on long terms. So it's the people that got you there and it's the people can take you from there. We need actions. We're dying on this side. So what are we gonna do? We're hurt. And y'all steady making, getting more money. People steady suing you. Every day I look up, it's a suit against St. Louis County. Y'all can't even afford to help the people that's hurt. How can y'all afford to pay for people killing people? It, 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 you're defeating the purpose. But if you get the right staff in here, y'all can save some money. You know, have y'all thought about that in the long haul? Have y'all thought about going in there and actually taking everybody out? You got him up there, but it's the other bad apples that's really the bad bunch. So what are you gonna do about those rotten apples? So that's what we're asking today for some charges and people gone. Line them up and fire them. That's it. And let them go. It is simple. You hire them, you fire them. Thank you.
Final speaker today is Angie Zorich.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Angie Zorich. I live in Oakville for about 25 years now. I do wanna thank most of the council members that have done a great job, I think, of responding to our plea. And I know that, you know, maybe you're a little bit limited at first in what you can do, but I appreciate the outpouring of, you know, toward the families. I, I know you guys, I believe you're very sincere in wanting to help. So thank you. And, and I also, I appreciate that Julia Childery is, is not the director, but you know, obviously we want a little bit more as far as that's concerned. But I am looking forward to the new, a new direction with Mr. Doyle. So I appreciate all of that. I, I want to know if we're even close to oversight. I know that last, you know, I, I don't think that you guys can fix this from the inside. I think there's too many bad actors. There's, there's just, if we don't have an oversight, I, I just think that should be a priority. Whatever oversight you guys have, I mean, they must, it's pop, pop policies and about, I just think that if someone outside, a regular citizens, people who care about what's going on in the jail could, oh, could see what's happening. If there's a complaint filed, there should be an advisory. I, I think we have an advisory board. So I, I think that's not good enough at this point. I wrote it down, but I'm trying to. I think there's two vacant seats on that advisory board and the others are pretty inactive. So I don't think that anything's getting done as far as that goes. So it's just non-existent, basically. I don't think, I don't think we've got any proof that there's anybody overseeing. If there's something happening in the jail, it's all inside of the jail. It's just its own little entity and there's nobody watching them, nobody policing them. They're policing themselves and that's not right. I also believe that the people in charge of writing policies think that we have good policies because some accreditation organization said so. We know that people are being treated inhumanly at the, at all levels in this jail and jails all across the country. Somehow policymakers have decided that people in jail don't deserve to have detreated with respect, that their lives don't matter. I hope that we can all agree that this is wrong. Whoever is involved in writing, approving, implementing these policies needs to be evaluated. The system is not working. We have been in the spotlight many times in recent years. So I think it's only right that we be the first to set an example for the entire country. We can do better. St. Louis County should do better. Thank you.
I just have a comment. It's hard to sit here and, and not say anything when you come to speaker cause I know you're looking for answers and you're not looking to come and speak and we just sit here and say nothing. But I would like to say, I, I agree with pretty much everything you've said. The problem is, is that, and this is hard to admit, we don't, we are limited at what we can do. And I'm glad you mentioned that and that you realize that. We didn't hire Ms. Childery. We didn't reappoint Ms. Childery to wherever she is. I don't even know where she went. I have no idea. Where? Okay. And we didn't appoint Mr. Doyle. However, I know him. I have faith in him. He's trustworthy and I'm, I'm optimistic about that. I feel good about that. But we really, you know, that's what we've been battling here the last few months is just to, 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 to gain our, you know, to be where we should be. Because when these things happen, it falls back on us. And everybody knows that here. It falls back on us. So we should have, play a role in the decision-making and we don't. We haven't been allowed to do that. So I'm sorry. I apologize for that.
Right. Now, I was gonna add, I was gonna mention that, but I was gonna add, we also, we can't file charges that will have to be the prosecuting attorney's office. We can't, we, we can request an investigation, but we can't force them to have one. We can only do what we can do on our side and looking into as much as possible. But as you see, they won't give us a lot of information as well. We, I'm sorry. We, we're addressing that through legal counsel as far as the subpoenas, subpoenas, as far as that's concerned. And others. I'll just say that. Right, right, right. I know what you're saying.
He's supposed to protect them and he's going to protect them. So he will tell you all anything to protect them.
Right, but I'm.
That's why I said you all need your own attorney.
And that was, that was the other thing. We have to have money, I guess, for like, we just talked about an attorney today for someone, uh, other personnel. And that's something that we don't, we can't automatically get an attorney. We tried to get our own attorney before, just to have one in general. So we're working on that. But that's still, that attorney would not represent us in court. We don't have, we wouldn't have an attorney like that. Or we can just get one to pretty, pretty much give advice. So these things that you, you mentioned, we just want to be clear. We would be glad to do those things if we could, but our hands are pretty much tied. And when I said we're gonna talk to someone about the subpoena, not necessarily the county council's office, but there are a couple of attorneys that we have as friends of ours who would kinda let us know what we, what they think. But as far as hiring someone, at this point, we can't do that. At this point, not to say we couldn't later, but at this point, we can't. But we will work with Mr. Captain Colonel Doyle. We will work with him as much as we can. We, as, hey, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Erby said, we all know him, most of us, shall I say, throughout the years and we think he will do a good job in that position. Sorry for being so long.
Ms. Trup, you're right. You have the power. This is a great example of what happens when the wrong person is in the wrong job. Barack Obama said, "Elections matter. Votes matter." This problem hangs around the neck of the administration. This body's doing everything it can to try and address your concerns, but as my colleagues have mentioned, we're exceedingly limited. So don't forget this, any of you, when the opportunity presents itself again to decide who should be county executive, who should be county prosecutor? Because you have the power at the end of the day.
That will conclude the public forum introduction of bills. Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, and ordinance amending Chapter 717, Title VII, St. Louis County Revised Order since 1974 as amended by repealing and reenacting Sections 717.010, 717.020, 717.050, and 717.056, 718.020, 722.040, and 722.056 pertaining to discrimination in connection with sale on or rental of housing. Bill number 103, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county council to execute such contracts as are necessary for the appointment of two attorneys to represent two defendants in three lawsuits in which St. Louis County is a party and in which, and in which there is a conflict of interest among the various defendants. Bill number 104, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance amending ordinance number 27,061 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for support of the summer food service program. Bill number 105, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance amending ordinance number 27,312 by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services in support of the St. Louis County Addressing Opioid Administration and Overdose Action Plan. Bill number 106, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an amendment to the tower T-L lease agreement with Sprint Spectrum Realty Company LLC, successor to Sprint Spectrum LP, for a telecommunications tower in Creve Court Park. Bill number 107, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Shot Spotter Inc. for providing the mission's predictive policing software service. Bill number 108, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $200,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general revenue fund for support of an annual update of the disparity, disparity study required by Section 107.071, St. Louis County Revised Order since 1974 as amended. Bill number 109, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $85,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general revenue fund for support of the workforce disparity study for 2019 required by Section 107.071, St. Louis County Revised Order since 1974 as amended. Bill number 110, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $50,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general revenue fund for procurement and strategic planning and staff training consultation for the Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprises Program. Bill number 111, introduced by Councilmember Erby for Councilmember Page, and ordinance appropriating and setting apart the sum of $20,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general revenue fund for support of procurement and maintenance of a diversity software solution for the Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise Program. Bill number 112, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, and ordinance providing for the vacation of a portion of excess right of way of Laramore Road, Tishner, BRG, and LD, Bella Fountain LLC. Mad Vice Chair, that is all the bills. Perfecting the bills. Bill number 270, introduced by Councilmember Wessinger for Councilmember Trakus. Mad Vice Chair, we have a substitute bill?
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Just to clarify the motions to hold Bill 270 on the order of business.
Right.
Bill number 17, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered. Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is here.
Bill number 21, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 21.
Bill number 21 is here.
Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 76 is here.
Bill number 82, introduced by Councilmember Trakus.
Please hold on the order of business.
Bill number 82 is here.
Bill number 83, introduced by Councilmember Trakus, Councilmembers Trakus and Harder.
Please hold Bill number 83.
Bill number 83 is here.
Bill number 84, introduced by Councilmember Fitch. Mad Vice Chair, we have a substitute bill?
Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 84, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, and ordinance appropriating the amount of $1,500,000. ordinance appropriating the amount of $1,515,086 of Proposition P funds from the unappropriated balance of the general fund for the support of the cost of police recruits to attend the county and municipal police academy and vehicle replacement for the St. Louis County Police Department.
I move for the adoption of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 84. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 83 is adopted.
I move to perfect, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 84. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on, hold on, Madam Chair. Peter, do we need, um, the entire council here for that purpose?
No.
You mean that? I vote no.
No.
It's a matter of discussion with, with members of the council and the, uh, the chief and others recently. Um, I think it's only fair to have Councilmember Page here for this discussion. Um, I think it's inappropriate to go forward without him being present. He's been intimately involved in those discussions.
Can I withdraw my motion and move to hold it?
Sure.
We'll wait for the council, the chairman to come back.
Thank you.
So bill number 84 is held. Or the substitute one. I'm sorry, substitute-
Sub one.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 84 is held. Thank you. Bill number 99, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for perfection of bill number 99. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 99 is perfected. Bill number 100, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 100.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 100 is perfected. Bill number 101, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 101, please. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 101 is perfected. Final passage of bills. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 35, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of substitute bill number 1 for bill number 35. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 35, there are six ayes and one absent. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 35 is finally passed. Bill number 70, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 70.
Second.
Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
I wanna say that I initially had some reservations about this legislation. We did some research about, um, what this money could and couldn't be used for, which ended up swaying me to, uh, be able to be in the position today where I'm gonna vote aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 70, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 70 is finally passed. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 78, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of substitute 1 for bill number 78. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, substitute bill number 1 for bill number 78, there are six ayes and one absent. Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 78 is finally passed. Bill number 79, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill 79, please. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 79, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 79 is finally passed. Bill number 86, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 86.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 86, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 86 is finally passed. Bill number 87, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 87. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 87, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 87 is finally passed. Bill number 88, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 88. Second. Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 88, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 88 is finally passed. Bill number 89, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 89.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 89, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 89 is finally passed. Bill number 90, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 90.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 90, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 90 is finally passed. Bill number 91, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 91.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 91, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 91 is finally passed. Bill number 92, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 92. Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 92, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 92 is finally passed. Bill number 93, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 93.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 93, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 93 is finally passed. Bill number 94, introduced by Councilmember Page. I move for final passage of bill number 94.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Vice Chair, bill number 94, there are six ayes and one absent. Bill number 94 is finally passed.